Seems like it's time to start the meeting and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note individuals making public comments be limited to five minutes. I have one individual signed up, Billy, for the IRB. I assume it would be the resolution. So we'll hold off and just raise your hand. I'll try to get you before we bring that to talk about. Is there anyone else that has not signed up that would like to come forward and speak to the City Council about any item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Give me the appropriate amount of time for people to have rushed to the dais, but okay. Yeah, I see nobody. Well, we will close out the public items then at this time. The next item up is the consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are several items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there anyone that would like to have any particular item removed? Yes, Mr. Caldol?
Yes, I'd like to remove item three.
Okay. We'd like to have item three removed. Is anybody else who would like any other items removed? Okay, I would entertain a motion for items one and two of the consent agenda. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve consent agenda items one and two.
Okay, we have a motion. I hear a second. Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, what would you like to talk about?
I would just like some explanation of it. It seems like there's a lot going on in that.
Okay.
So just help me to understand everything.
Okay. Looks like Mr. Dyer is coming to the podium to address your concerns.
What's a plat that's being done in order to allow multiple property owners to convey their respective lots to each other? And so that's pretty much, it's very straightforward in that fact. So what questions would you have?
Oh, it, so we're taking what's currently one lot and replating it into the four lots?
There's actually...
Simple as that?
There's one lot and then there's multiple parcels.
Okay.
So that's what's happening. There's multiple parcels that are going to be divided up into four lots and a tract for the purposes of each property owner. It's actually per Merriam code that that's the proper way to go through subdivision of property and then the division of property.
Okay, so it is just as simple as replating those into four parcels?
Yes, it is. So just a little bit more, there is, each one of those property owners has future designs on what they'd like to do with the property, but that will be, they'll bring those forward at the appropriate time. So this is simply so that each one can get their, get their own property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, Mr. Dyer, concerning that particular topic? Okay, I would entertain, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number three from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy. Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. One of the things I failed to do at the very beginning of the meeting, and I apologize for not doing this before we actually broke into and started it since it got to my mayor's report, and it's all written down here, but you know, we're very fortunate to be living in America or the United States itself and have the freedoms that we have and not be experiencing the things that the Middle East is currently undergoing with actually innocent citizens being killed or murdered or shot and things that are happening. And the atrocities is occurring both to the Israelites and the Palestinians, both. On both sides, there are things happening over there that we don't have to experience here in the United States of America. And you know, it's my fervent wish is that we hopefully that somehow if we can intervene in any way to help bring that to a successful resolution that that would, you know, that we do that. But if we could just have a moment of silence just in light of everything that they're going through right now, just give us a few seconds of silence considering what's occurring. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, for the rest of my mayor's report, I always like to report on a few things that's been going on, at least the things that I know about. As council knows, sometimes I miss you guys of things that you've done, but I'd like to at least show that we do more than just conduct two meetings a month. Mr. Engel, Mr. Dyer, and I met with a resident of the possibility of replating of his property, and that was pretty exciting, dealing with that. And hopefully that's going to come to a successful resolution. I think there were some good things laid out for that individual, and hopefully that he'll be able to have a good path forward with that resolving his issue. Ms. Hands and Ms. Yodrich attended the night out against crime hosted by the Merriam PD. Did anybody else get a chance to get in there? Because I wasn't there for the whole thing. So, but thanks to our police department and to our park and rec department itself for putting that event on. It's always a good opportunity, obviously, for not only having free food, but getting to meet with our police officers and having some entertainment by our public, our park and rec department. Always puts on a good thing for the kids. I believe all of our council, myself, got a chance to meet individually. I think everybody got to with our public art consultant, Julia Dixon. I know I met with her, and I think she had at least attended to try to meet with everyone. And I'm assuming that that has...
No.
Nope, we didn't.
I did.
Okay, we have some that didn't make it. Okay, I didn't. I'm sorry. Well, well, okay, some of us got to meet with her. And sorry, the rest of you didn't. But you get a chance to meet with her. She's coming back, I believe, in December. And I have an opportunity to meet with her, and she's developing a plan for our public art in Merriam. I think it's going to be exciting with some things going on there. I and Chris Hands were able to attend a block party over on Cary Lane. And there's nothing better than breaking bread and getting a chance to meet with our residents and talk to them about their concerns and things that's happening in their areas. I know there was some other block parties that went on. I don't know if anyone else got to attend those, but that was the only one I got to attend. But, and of course, Ms. Hands and I got to meet with Mr. Engel. That's always an exciting time to put the agenda together. But Ms. Hands, I know helped with one of the games, and I don't know if anyone else did, down at the Merriam Halloween Happening Event that occurred. I don't know if anybody else got a chance to attend down there, but that was always, you know, a lot of kids. And my understanding, there was a sighting of Elvis down there at the time. But so that...
Sickly looking.
Sickly looking. Oh, my gosh. All right. So, but that's always good when we get a chance to go out there and put on those events. I know the public really, what was it, about 400 people down there, I think was?
(inaudible).
Yeah, it was an awesome turnout and lots of games and things for all the kids. That was nice. And I realized, as I was putting this together, well, it was actually yesterday, that I often fail to acknowledge council members who are serving on other committees' force. And I'd just like to bring that up because I don't always attend those, seldom do I attend those meetings, but they do. And that's council members Chaveta and Leahy for their service on the 5701 Committee. And also, council members Yodrich and Silvers serve on our art committee. And so they're often attending monthly meetings for those groups. And I sometimes fail to mention that, so I'd just like to throw that out there. I think there's going to be a meeting coming up for, it's 701 and the 25th, so it's coming up shortly. And I'm sure they'll be there. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Hands.
I have one more.
One more?
It's breaking news.
Breaking news.
Ms. Gard and I attended the LKM City Forum today, the Legislative Forum, at the beautiful Lake Olathe. I don't see whether she's here or not, but, so we talked about the legislative priorities and what's going on at the state.
Awesome. Okay. Well, thanks for representing us at that meeting. Okay, I don't have anything else. Any of the council members have anything for the mayor's reports that I might have missed? Okay. All right. Well, we will move right along to council items then. And the first one up is consider of approval of a resolution for the intent to issue industrial revenue bonds. And I want to make sure that, I think this is the item that Mr. Cronin is going to want to speak to. Do you want to speak first and then have him come up, or let him come up before?
That's the general practice, but it's your pleasure.
You're at the podium, but just don't let me forget you, Mr. Cronin. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The next item on the agenda, first off, Joe Serrano sends his regrets. He unfortunately had a prior commitment this evening with another of his clients, another city that is doing the similar good work of this council. He unfortunately can't be here, although he could run in at any second, but I doubt he'll be here. So again, he sends his apologies. The next item on the agenda is consider approval of a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to provide sales tax exemption for a commercial facility at 9510 West 67th Street. Trident Merriam LLC, also known as Aristocrat Motors, has purchased the former Synchroony property at the corner of 67th and Carter, right by the railroad tracks, with the intent of expanding the Aristocrat footprint with the addition of a 63,000 square foot, $30.2 million new Mercedes-Benz facility. They have, this is an item that was covered at the last meeting. It was covered on October 9th. And after healthy, robust discussion from all parties involved, staff was directed to go back and right-size the amount of the bonds. So I'm going to reference any numbers relative to the right sizing of those bonds. Right sizing being what we took to be, what is the amount of Kansas taxable sales? And so we have right-sized by what we believe we heard was the direction of council, that number from 24 million to 10.1 million dollars. So I'll get to that in a second. The Aristocrat, because of what they would view, and probably most would view, as an extraordinary cost to develop this property, has approached the city for potential partnership through incentives. The incentive that they have requested is industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption. The way that those work is essentially, it's a sales tax exempt certificate for all goods that are purchased in the state of Kansas or sourced to the state of Kansas. We, that number that they have given us after we went back to talk to them is 10.1 million dollars. They still have a $30.2 million project to construct, all in, for that expansion. But in terms of taxable sales, 10.1 million dollars, 10,000, I'm sorry, 10,160,380, just for the public record, is the amount of taxable sales that the bonds would be issued for if council were to approve. The, one of the things that I think we got high-centered on perhaps a little bit last time was the amount of the incentive. It's difficult at this stage to determine exactly what the incentive will be, because it depends on how many of those goods are purchased or sourced to the state of Kansas, to Johnson County, to Merriam. In order to provide a number, we, what I say optimistically assumed that all of those materials would be bought, sourced, or destination to Merriam, so we could provide a number. Because if they're not bought in Merriam, if they're bought in Wyandotte, there's a different sales tax rate there. If they're bought somewhere else in the state of Kansas, there's a different sales tax rate there. So while they would recognize the sales tax exemption, it wouldn't, we don't know what that rate is until they actually buy those goods. So what we have done for the point of just providing an incentive number is assumed optimistically that they would buy all 10.1 million dollars of those construction materials or materials to furnish that facility here in Merriam, which that's not going to happen. But it helps us at least provide a number for a ballpark of what that incentive will be. I know that created some confusion. I apologize for that. So again, the incentive is approximate. The IRBs, while they do provide a sales tax exemption, I think it might be worth keeping in mind, I think another thing was that the sales tax will not be going to the local units of government. I think one of the things that we might want to keep in mind is that if council were to approve the IRBs, it would probably behoove them to then buy all of those goods in Kansas. So while they may, we as citizens of Kansas might forego the benefits of the sales tax, the businesses of Kansas will accrue the sales of those items. Whereas if we don't approve IRBs, they're probably going to source those materials wherever they're least expensive. That would be what I would imagine. The applicant is here. They certainly are happy to answer any additional questions that you have. Again, we have downsized the bond issuance from 24 million to 10.1 million dollars. Staff has presented this to council because after review, there are several reasons that we felt that it be, that it passed administrative muster. First is that City Council Goal 4.1, City Council Goals being approved by City Council each year to guide staff throughout the course of the year in some of their decision-making. City Council Goal 4.1 is provide support to existing businesses. City Council Goal 4.2 is expand the commercial tax base. We view the issuance of IRBs for this particular project to meet those council goals, at least from an administrative standpoint. When we look at the amount of sales tax that are generated at this particular site, take into account that they are, to what they have shared with us, they're going to have 1,100 additional vehicles to sell. We assume that that means we're going to expand the commercial sales tax base at some amount. And the fact that IRBs have been authorized in the state of Kansas since 1960, the state of Kansas is perfectly fine with these. They view this as an opportunity to partner with local government to expand the sales tax base for all residents. That's why it's in front of you. Staff felt like it passed muster on all of those points. I'm happy to answer any questions about, again, the process, about the resolution of intent. If there's any project-specific questions, the applicant is here to answer project-specific questions. Other than that, I'm happy to...
Any questions for Mr. Engel? I see no questions for Mr. Engel. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Does anybody have anything else you need to ask the applicants? Okay, yep, Mr. Silvers?
I don't have a question for the applicant, but I just, I've been doing some research on IRBs, and I just wanted to share some of my findings that are going to affect my vote. And I know Billy wants to make a statement.
Yeah, before we vote, I'll have Mr. Cronin come forward. Do you want to make your comments now or after?
As long as my mic's on, I'll just go ahead, if that's okay. So IRBs, this is what I kind of came, my conclusion that I came to for myself. IRBs are a type of private activity bond, which means that the proceeds of the bond issue must be used for a project that has a public benefit. And yes, this does feed into our tax base. It's currently feeding into our tax base, and it's expected to expand. We don't know by how much. This could include creating jobs, increasing the tax base, or improving public infrastructure. By providing businesses with a low-cost financing IRB can help them to expand and create jobs, which we don't know how many jobs this may create, but I don't, I think IRBs lots of times are talking about larger projects than this one. However, IRBs have also been criticized for being used to subsidize projects that would happen anyway, which I believe this one falls into that category, for benefiting wealthy corporations at the expense of taxpayers. And then here's some examples of projects that can be financed with IRBs, and they are larger projects, manufacturing facilities, equipment and machinery. And this could fall into equipment and machinery, but I don't think the quantities that we're talking about reach what I think the typical IRB was intended for. Researching and development facilities, pollution and control facilities, and infrastructure projects such as roads, bridges, airports, and affordable housing, which obviously this project does none of those. IRBs can be a good option for businesses looking for a low-cost source of financing. And in my mind, that's what we're being asked to do, is finance a project that in, I think the financing should have been part of the business plan since it is known that Mercedes-Benz Corp. asks dealerships to upgrade their facilities on a pretty regular basis, as in, I don't know, like a 10-year period, I think is what we heard this one might have been. So with that research, I just have a lot of trouble with a luxury brand business, even though they have been a great partner for our city and do feed into our tax base. I have trouble with applying it to this project. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay. Mr. Cronin, would you like to come forward, sir?
Name and address for the record, please. Yes, Billy Cronin, 6633 Wed Street. At our last meeting, the applicant stated that they were going to build this project, and I'm glad that we heard that two weeks ago. It's a great project. It should continue, and it will make a great improvement on our city's economy. They also stated that they need help financing the construction. It's going to be a very large cost to them, and that this IRB would give them that help. But at what cost? Last meeting, it was $312,000 of Merriam sales tax revenue that we'd miss out on. They revised those figures, and now it's 152,000, which is admittedly a lot better. That's about $15 per Merriam resident, if you were to divide that out. That's the cost to the budget divided by the number of residents we have in our city, $15. Earlier, earlier this month, I proposed to council and staff an idea that they could repay that amount five, seven, 10 years down the road. You can pick a time. Once their interest has gone down, once they're making, once they're generating new revenue with this new facility, let them pay that back as a payment in lieu of taxes. We've done that before in other cases of the city helping financing projects. I think it would be appropriate here, and I think even giving them a delay would be a generous compromise, so it's not an expense to them all upfront. And they do have that opportunity to build it at this, with these funds that they can loan very inexpensively, but ultimately pay that back to our economy, or to our city budget, I should say. That's all I suggest, is to approve it with a repayment at some point in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Cronin? Okay, I guess I would be remiss if I didn't say that, in my understanding of how this whole system operates, that it really will not be a cost of $15 each of our residents. It's not going to be on the property taxes. It's not something that those individuals will be paying, for one thing. So when you go to vote, that's not really what's occurring. It's a matter of not paying sales tax on those materials itself that are going to be purchased for the building of that building. So that's what we're under, it's under discussion this evening, not additional cost to our residents. So, but, yeah, Mr. Caldol?
You know, I've thought a lot about this. The whole IRB process, to me, seems quite convoluted. But that's what the state legislator came up with. And I think way back into my academic years and studying theories of taxation, I sort of get the premise of it. But once I get past the process and get back to what it actually does for us, you know, if you buy into that you should tax behaviors accordingly, tax the behaviors you want to discourage, don't tax the behaviors you want to encourage, I think we all want to encourage building on commercial property. And we want to encourage people to buy things in Kansas. And we shouldn't tax those things. So if we're going to encourage people to build commercial projects, we should not tax them buying materials in Kansas to do that. So I will be supporting this.
So you want to have any additional, I'd like to share any of their opinions before I call for a vote on this particular matter. Well, oh, yes, Ms. Ryder.
Just a quick question for the clients. Do you have a rest, an estimated number of people that you intend to hire for this new facility? And how does that compare to your current employment numbers, based on Jason's comment earlier?
Mr. Heaven, please state your name and business address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Pete Heaven, 6201 College Boulevard in Overland Park, and I represent the applicant. We currently employ 160 people at our facility. We'll be moving that to about 180, so 20 additional jobs. Any other questions I can answer?
Any questions for Mr. Heaven while he's here? Yeah. I see no additional questions, sir. Thank you for addressing that. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
My bad. I actually do have a question.
Oh, don't go too far. Okay.
I just wanted you to get your extra steps sent for the day. I've noticed some work has started down there. Have, has the contractor hired any local crews for the work that's being done down there? Or are the subs coming in from out of state?
I believe we're in the bid process now, aren't we, Marion?
Centric.
Please give your name and...
I'm sorry.
Address, sir.
Hi, I'm Marion Battalia. I'm the president of Aristocrat Motor Company. The contractor that we use is Centric, and I do believe they hire all local crews. I don't, they've built a few of our buildings in the past, and it's all been local.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for the applicants? Okay. I see no, I see no additional questions. I think you can say, take your seats.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, well, with that, I would entertain a motion if the council so wish. Ms. Hands?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution of intent to issue federally taxable private activity revenue bonds, IRBs, in the principal amount not to exceed
Okay, I have a motion. Do I, here's, have a second. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Councilmember Neil.
I have trouble with this because I very much am, you know, opposed to what I consider to be excessive incentives that are offered often by the state for private, private businesses to receive subsidies when they don't necessarily need them. I am sympathetic to the issue of materials being acquired in Kansas and in Merriam, and that incentive to purchase and do business with essentially local companies may be influenced by the issuance of these IRBs. But I generally am opposed to IRBs, but I'm going to go ahead and vote yes on this.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Nay.
Councilmember Yodrich?
I think it's clear how I feel about giving businesses that don't need incentives, give incentives, but for the good of the state, like what Bruce said. I'll go ahead and vote aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, applicants. Okay. All right, it looks like next item up is the, I believe, the monthly finance report. I'd like Director Oliver to come forward for the, an update on how much money we're making.
Good evening. Your September report was in the packet. Is, everything continues. The budget's right on track. We're doing fine. You may have noticed... the budget's right on track, uh, we're doing fine. Uh, you may have noticed, or may not have, in the, uh, report sent out by the city administrator, but, um, October 1st, we had a nice milestone in that we paid off the 2012 bonds in their entirety. And so all we have left now are the bonds that were used to finance the community center. And those will be, will expire in 2027, and the amount outstanding on those is 9,430,000, which, um, for a city is a very low amount, and very nice to see that in just a few years we'll be debt-free. So I would like to entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Leahy?
Um, I had two real quick. It looks like the sales tax numbers are coming in pretty well, year-to-date.
They are.
And then we're pretty under budget for salaries. Do we have several openings that-
Uh, we have had vacancies, um, throughout the year. Um, we've had, have you ever not had a police officer vacancy? And at times, we've had, you know, four or five.
Four or five, yeah.
We've had, um, maintenance worker positions that have been open, and then just the other here and there. So-
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Director Oliver?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, the Public Art Committee, uh, oh, wait a minute, Community Development Update. I almost skipped right over that, didn't I? Director, Director Dyer, my gosh, I almost, I hate to miss out on hearing what exciting things your department's doing.
Yes, yes, yes. So, um, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. Um, wrapping up the grants for 2023, and as those things do, as soon as you wrap up, uh, one year, we start off with the new year. So, we are diligently working on getting all our 2024 grant applications updated and ready to go. Um, the two big ones is sustainability and the residential exterior grant program. Um, we'll start taking applications for those first part, the first working day of January, which I think's the second. I'm not 100% sure on that. Um, so we, uh, hope to have those applications for those grants up and on our website here, uh, within the next, uh, two to three weeks. So, uh, those will be coming out. We'll obviously get the word out, uh, through all the different social media, uh, portals to let everybody know that those are out there and available. So, um, those will be coming up in the next couple of weeks. A little bit of update on Merriam Grant Station, Evergy, um, from the city's perspective. I know I sound like a broken record, but we continue to, um, have discussions with them in regards to the agreement that we need to sign for them for the removal of the overhead lines along Shymishon Parkway. Our, our city attorney has finally been able to have them call him back, uh, so that discussion has started. Um, we'll see, uh, how the give and take goes, and how long it takes, uh, for that to happen. And then also on the private developer side of things, just to let you know, um, they are very much hoping Evergy shows up, uh, the, early this week to remove some poles along, uh, Eevee Street on the, um, south side of Shymishon Parkway. On the east side of Eevee Street, there's some Evergy poles that need to be removed, uh, particularly one pole that's further down to the south. That pole is right in the spot where they need to put a very large storm box. Uh, so they need to get that pole all the way, so they can put that storm box in there to complete a significant part of the stormwater sewer, uh, network for that project. So, we're hoping to get that done this week. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Dyer? Okay, I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now, it's moving down. It looks like, uh, we had minutes for the Public Art Committee, but, um, that was, I don't see Lauren out there to, oh, there she is. If you have any questions, uh, for Lauren, uh, none, I assume? Okay. Looks like you're off the hook. Thank you, though, for, for attending this evening. Um, Mr. Engel, do you have anything else from a staff's, uh, point?
Uh, the only thing I have to add is on Friday, I was, uh, lucky enough with Councilmember Hands and Director Dyer to go on a tour of the new library. And Amy was there also. I'm sorry, I, when I was standing, I looked over her. She was, I'm just playing. No, it was a, it was a, it was a fantastic tour. We had members of the library board, uh, we had staff members from the library. Uh, it was, uh, we had, um, a former county librarian, Sean Casterly, was there. Had kind words to say about, uh, the cities, um, working with them in this long, uh, but well-received, we hope, in the long-run process. Uh, facility looks great. They had just started to paint the, uh, web room, uh, and they gave a very comprehensive history of that, and the, that room is fantastic-looking. I mean, the colors in there is very, very vibrant. Uh, the, the story that, that the paintings tell, it's gonna be a fantastic facility when open. We're super excited, uh, to have them on-site, and we're looking forward to, um, them honing in on a more specific grand opening date sometime in '24. But I wanted to share that, uh, I was lucky enough to do that. It was, if you get a chance to, to take a tour before they open, man, it's, it's a cool, it's a cool facility. It's great.
Great.
Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Engel? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Leahy.
Um, mine was more of a comment. I just wanted to point out the, the record-setting numbers at the community center this month, that we surpassed our total daily visits for the year already, um, in early October, and membership visits surpassed last year by mid-October.
We did. That, that was great news, a testament to, uh, Director Slocum and her staff and our residents who are, uh, and some non-residents who are, are seeing great value in that facility down there. We hope when we have the library open, that that's, uh, just gonna make those numbers, uh, cook even hotter. So, yeah, thank you for, for, for pointing that out.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel? Okay. All right. Well, it appears that, I think we have an executive session-
Yes, sir.
-in the city, Mr. Engel?
Can you give me a guess on time? 30?
30 minutes? Okay. I would entertain a motion for the executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the governing body recess into executive session for preliminary discussion on property acquisition, as allowed under KSA 7543 19B6, which allows the governing body to hold an executive session for preliminary discussion on property acquisition. Present will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator, and assistant city administrator. The meeting will reconvene in the chamber, in, in the chambers at, let's say, 8:15.
Okay, 8:15. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavet.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes, 8-0.
Well, we will reconvene in reference to, uh, if there's no, nothing else that anyone needs to discuss, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we adjourn.
Move a motion, have a second? Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.